Excellent, thank you. All right. Welcome to the Planning Board meeting Friday night, November 21st, 2025 at 5:00 PM. And we are remote on Zoom only tonight. So I'll read the prelude. Certain meetings normally held in the municipal offices are being held remotely with adequate alternative means of public access. And where required, public participation provided in accordance with House Bill Number 62 of the 194th General Court, which extended the governor's March 12th, 2020. 2020, oh, okay, sorry. Orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Sections 20, until June 30th, 2027. Meetings are typically broadcast on Frontier Community Access Television, FCAT, and are available on YouTube. All right. So let's see, meeting attendees, please mute your phones unless you are about to talk. Let's see what else is here. Guidelines for business meeting, please speak one at a time, follow Deerfield Code of Conduct, be respectful, considerate, courteous, concise, and recognized by the chair. So you can either raise your little fake hand or your real hand when you want to speak. And let's see, I'm going to do a roll call. So Andrea?
Andrea Leibson here.
Kathy Vitroba?
Kathy Vitroba here.
Kathy Sylvester?
Kathy Sylvester here.
Anne Buchanan?
Anne Buchanan here.
And Denise Mason here, and Emily Gaylord should be coming soon. And Rachel Blaine is not in attendance this evening. Okay. So I'm just going to quickly review the minutes from 11:03, 2025. Does anyone have any corrections, additions? To the minutes? If not, do I hear a motion? To accept the minutes?
I motioned to accept.
And I can be abstaining, so because I've not attended the meeting.
That's fine. Okay, so who made a motion?
Kathy Vitroba.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, just raise your hands. Okay.
Abstain.
Okay. All right. Minutes accepted. Okay, so new business, we are first going to start off with the A&R Mountain Road, map 173 lots 50 and 51. And I think we've all received that information. It's off mounted road. There were two lots that have been split into four lots. And they have the correct amount of frontage. The building commissioner has no issue with it. Is there anyone here representing the A&R? Nobody? I think Alex?
Um, I think he's trying to unmute. Uh, it's the gentleman with the Samsung. Hold on.
Oh, okay. Gentleman with Samsung? Can't hear you. No.
How's that?
Oh, that's good.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Yeah, this is Peter Burkevich, the owner.
All right. Okay, so is there anything, any other information? I mean, as I said.
None, unless you need something. Dan Saul's divided them for me. And he said, like you said, the building inspector was good with it.
Okay. Anybody in the board, does anyone have any questions about the lots? No? I think it's probably the most straightforward A&R that I've seen since I've been on the planning board. So thank you for that.
Well, that's good. Well, thank Dan.
Yeah, no, that's good. Okay. No questions from the planning board? Okay, I mean, these are usually pretty, hey, Emily. Emily, do you have any questions about the A&R? No? Okay. All right. If no one sees any issues, do I hear a motion to accept the A&R?
Motion to accept.
That's Andrea?
That's Emily.
Okay, all right. Put it to a vote. I'll just do a roll call. Kathy? Sylvester?
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Andrea Leibson?
Andrea Leibson, yes.
Kathy Vitroba?
Kathy Vitroba, yes.
Emily Gaylord?
Emily Gaylord, yes.
Anne Buchanan?
Anne Buchanan, yes.
And Denise Mason, yes. All right, you're good to go. And so we'll be in next week, I mean, within the next week or so, to sign the papers. And then Amy will let you know when everything is ready.
All right, thank you very much.
Right, you're welcome, and good luck with that.
All right, thank you. Bye now.
Bye.
Yeah, so can I just say, Planning Board members just dropped by my office to sign that?
Sure. Okay, and so should, I mean, you're there Monday through Friday. What time?
Yeah, actually, this week, being Thanksgiving week, I believe we're out early on Wednesday.
Okay.
And I'm not sure I'm going to be there on Friday.
Okay, well, yeah.
Then get in on earlier in the week then, Amy, that's not a problem.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And if not, you know, early next week, but yeah.
That's fine. And we only need four people to sign that anyway for a quorum. So if someone isn't able to make it, that's fine.
Okay.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, I'm going to move on to Two Sugarloaf Street. Special permit. Notice is hereby given that the Deerfield Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Friday, November 21st, 2025, at 5:00 PM on an application filed by Sugarloaf Development LLC for special permit for construction of a three-story mixed-use building with ground for commercial space and 12 residential units above. Located at Two Sugarloaf Street, identified in the assessor's records as map 168 lot 13 pursuant to bylaw 179. Sections 3100, application documents available for review in foyer of municipal offices or online at www.deerfieldmass.deerfieldma.us in the calendar event. Okay. So, um, let's see, and who is here to?
I'll take care of it, Madam Chair.
Okay. Wait, who's talking?
Sure. So for the record, Tom Reedy, Turner with Bacon Wilson out of Amherst, here on behalf of Sugarloaf Development. As the Chair noted, requesting a special permit for relief under your zoning bylaw to allow reduced parking. If you'll remember, we were here in person November 3rd, and the question came up about the special permit requirement. The board was kind enough to schedule a Friday at 5:00 PM hearing, so we thank you very much for accommodating us. And in a minute, I'll share my screen just to refresh everybody with the location in the plan. And really, what we're asking for is for a special permit, and the board has the authority to grant it if they find that there's suitable parking. And I think you'll see that proximate to this lot, there is suitable parking. And then we also had discussions last time about town lots available. Not that we're necessarily relying on those here, but that was part of the discussion last time. So I'll just share my screen if I could. Either Amy or Alex, please.
Yeah, can you request it? Oh, okay, perfect.
I tried, and it, yeah, it's, you're just, I'm, it's disabled.
Sorry, I'm going to get that up. Oh, my gosh, hold on one second, I'm making a hash out of this. Okay. Uh, you should be able to share, actually. Give that a try.
Yes. All right, so if you could all see my screen, you've got Sugarloaf Street here on this side, South Main on this side. This is where that proposed development, which was approved, is located. The bylaw requires 2.5 spaces per unit, which for, you know, this building, you've got 13 units, 13 beds. And so what we're doing is between Two Sugarloaf and Four Sugarloaf, they're going to be utilizing this existing parking area here. Uh, I believe there's 34 spaces here, there's two spaces here, and then there's on-street parking spaces as well. So we're, we are asking for a reduction from that 2.5 to one per. And we believe that based upon kind of market conditions, physical infrastructure of the building, and also the surrounding parking area, and then overall management, that the board can reduce the number of parking spaces because it can be adequately served by the fewer number of spaces. So I'll leave this up if you've got any questions. You've seen it before, there's been no changes. But I just, I'll leave it up at their questions.
Right, okay. Actually, I mean, does any, do you guys need to see that? Because it's much easier not to see that if people are asking questions.
I'll take it down if you want, and I can put it back.
Great, thanks. Andrea, and then Kathy Sylvester?
And I have questions.
Um, did the police chief say that 1.5 spaces was okay with him? Or did he say one? Looked to me like it said 1.5, so I'm concerned about that.
Hi, uh, Tom Johnson, Tom Reedy, if it's okay if I?
Yeah, please, please, please.
Yeah, I, my name's Tom Johnson. I'm the engineer with Proterra Design Group. We're the ones that prepares plans here, our offices in Hadley, Mass. Um, I, I had a chance to speak with Chief Pachuric. He, his comment, his initial comment and his follow-up comment were more, he wasn't looking at specific parking regulations. So he, he was looking at as a common sense kind of approach. He was saying if there are enough overall parking spaces, that 1.5, people that utilize the residential had a place to park off the street, he was good with that. And he was also good with the commercial users parking on the street in town, town lots. So that was just his own justification. If there is, quantity-wise, if there was enough parking for 1.5 times the number of units proposed. So it, the, his letter didn't necessarily match the, the parking regulation count, but it was more, he wasn't, he was discounting the commercial altogether. Interesting. I want to make sure that the residential users aren't parking out on the street, that there is enough spots for them.
Okay, so then I have a follow-up, and that is that during the winter, there's no on-street parking at night, if I understand that correctly. So that can't be counted on for at night.
That's correct. There's, there's, like we mentioned, this lot in the back, there's sufficient parking for the residential users here.
Okay, and it won't impact the businesses that are nearby?
No. And one of the things that came up the last hearing, and I think is, we, we talked with Jason and the applicant here. I think some of, and also talking with Chief Pachuric, what's happened, I think they run into it sometimes in the past, is folks would actually park in, in other buildings, parking lots for other buildings, and then that would push residential users out into other spaces. And I know that has been an issue in the past. I think what, one way that would be, you know, kind of a good approach here, would it puts, would be to put signage specific to those spots that would reserve them for individual units. So for example, you know, along that row of 16, it could be, you know, this is the parking space for Two Sugarloaf Apartment 1. And so that was, that is specific to that spot for residential.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Kathy Sylvester, then Kathy Vitroba?
So, you know, I haven't been at prior meetings, so forgive me if this has been gone over, but there's more than 30 spaces. And so are the other ones, you know, taken by other businesses? And I'm not sure why you can't do one and a half, I guess.
So, yeah, there, it's a shared lot. The applicant also owns the, the building next door. Uh, and so that, there are some parking, uh, there's four apartments there as well. So even considering those four apartments, and then the proposed apartments, with the count of parking, there is, there is, it, it's just, it's just semantics how you count the one and a half. Whether you're saying the commercial users will park in the street like the majority of the commercial use in town, then, then you, you could say there's one and a half. If you count commercial spaces also utilizing that lot, then there's a, there's a certain fixed number available.
So for people that are staying overnight in the building's residence, there's plenty of parking, it sounds.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Kathy Vitroba, you had a question?
Yes, I did, and it was probably answered, but I might have forgot. So accessible parking, how many accessible parking spots are there? And where are they located?
So right now, there's, for the building, there's two proposed, and those are the two in the lot directly, the driveway in the lot directly behind them. Uh, and then there's also a potential for accessible space in the, the, the large parking lot as well.
Do you, do you want to share your screen brief, briefly to just show that? Kathy, those are the ones that are like parallel to the back of the building?
No. So like, is it kind of in between Wolfies, that space in the back?
Yeah, two, two spaces here. Sorry, can you see my screen? Okay.
Yeah.
But this is the proposed building. It's pushed, like, like we discussed, the existing, the existing Old Comby building is set back here. The new building will be pushed forward. There'll be a driveway behind it, and there's two accessible spots proposed.
Okay. Is there, so, I mean, that's, there's not a lot of accessible parking in this downtown area. So is there, is there going to be a camera back there by any chance or something? To monitor maybe how that they, that they remain available for those that need them? I think, I think my concern is this. I, I think that's great, and I do remember going over that before. And I know that parking at times is going to be a struggle. And, and it's going to ebb and flow. It's, it's the nature of every community everywhere, and I don't know why. Everybody has a car for some reason. I just want to make sure that those are made available, like that there's not a habitual offender, somebody that's coming in out of state to park to make their way up to Treehouse, like how? I guess that's just a little bit of a concern for me.
Sure, I mean, I mean, handicap parking spaces are, that's something that's pretty enforceable. So if someone's parking there, that's a, certainly could have their car towed as a result, or ticketed too. So.
I mean, I guess it wouldn't really fall into your domain, per se. It would be more of a, like a state D issue for the police department.
Yeah, and I think kind of, you might have, one of the takeaways from the last hearing is, is that, you know, Jason and, and his company are very involved, very hands-on. So, you know, if someone's parking in a spot, they shouldn't be, their, their offices literally, they live in town, their office is literally around the corner. They're going to know about it before.
Well, point of contact is very close, so we appreciate that. Awesome.
Yep, okay, thank you. Do you have another question?
Yeah, a follow-up. Would the, would the accessible places, spaces in the back, at least one of them be designated for that apartment that would be on the ground floor?
I think, sure, if, if that is a, is a handicap accessible apartment, apartment, I think intent there was to, to make it handicap accessible. So, yeah, for sure.
I mean, for what it's worth, I'd say you might not want to designate and take away an ADA space in the rear just because, you know, they are pretty prime and getting, you know, if somebody's going to use one of the other, you know, use one of the businesses in the front to have that ADA parking in the back, it's something that, you know, one of these things is letting the business and like the operators of the business make the best decisions as the business evolves, and the business means like the entirety of this mixed-use project. And so if it turns out that it is wise to restrict that ADA space and designate it, if that's even possible, because I don't know under the Americans with Disabilities Act, if that is possible to say only this person may park in this space, and then the owners would not have to replace it somewhere else, because I don't know if they have to be like publicly available spaces. My bigger point is, you know, let the owners manage it the way that it needs to be managed, instead of kind of affirmatively saying this is how it will be managed when in practice, it's probably not the best way. So I think they hear you exactly what you're saying, and, I mean, I, I, I trust that they'll do the right thing.
Okay, it is a private lot. I mean, I don't know whether it's going to be considered a private lot. And I know a part, you know, we're getting a little ahead of ourselves here, but part of the conditions are that there, it is designated parking for the particip, you know, the residents. So I suppose that you could designate it as a private lot, and people could have something that they put on their windshield that denotes that they actually are a resident there if there's an issue. So I don't know. Okay. All right, other questions from the planning board? Before I open it up, I see a hand up. Nope. Okay, well, I'm going to open it up to public comment. And there's a person with a hand up.
And do we want to limit the public comment to two minutes per person?
Also a timer, and if folks could please identify themselves, that's one of the challenges we've had with Zoom.
I know, there's someone, Aristide, Aristides? I, I can't pronounce the last name, it's, there's only part of it. All right. Do you have a, a comment, sir?
Yes, my name is Aristides Theodoropoulos. And I moved to South Deerfield in 1990, and I bought holiday pizza. Uh, since then, I'm a resident. And always, South Deerfield was a friendly town to the residents. What I mean, someone was taking his car to come down to the downtown, park his car, enjoy their dinner, and go home without parking space, without the parking meters and things like that. That was really nice of the town, and always was that way. Now, the reason I participate in today's meeting is because lately, we start having problems with the customers coming to pick up food in my, my place. And sometimes, some of them, they complain, I was going around for five, five, 10 minutes to find a parking space in order to pick up a food. I talked to some other, I mean, to most of the residents who live, you know, who have business in this area, in the downtown area, and all of them afraid what's going to happen later. When I see a huge building in a small lot with 13 residential apartments and two businesses. And also, I have to inform you about something else. The next building where Pizza Deerfield is right now, some years back in the late 90s, beginning of 2000, I used to have Georgia's Restaurant there. And with the Georgia's Restaurant, we used more than 50 parking spaces. We're doing really good business. For some reason, something happened later. After I sold my business, changed few hands, and now there are not many businesses over there in that place. What I'm afraid, if some, another owner of that pizza place takes over and again becomes full, full, you know, sized restaurant, it might be another problem. Because at that time, we occupy the whole space in the back, you know, of the building of Sugarloaf, Four Sugarloaf Street. And even customers even had to park where Bank of America used to be, or the surrounding area. And at that time, I remember then even, I'm sorry?
Uh, we are well past two minutes at this point.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay. If, if you want to finish your thoughts, sir, and then we can. Yeah.
I, I said, you know, you know, I won't have any problems if that building was at the end of, of the Sugarloaf Street, and not in the beginning, not in the downtown. Because believe me, I'm afraid even for the existence of some places here, it's so critical, the parking. And I heard, I, I read even actually, even I, I heard the gentleman saying, oh, there are also parking, you know, in the area. The town hall, because Tilton Library is coming, built a nice, good idea, and they build additional parking. What about when Tilton Library brings more visitors? What's going to happen then? Where are they going to park in the downtown? When there are so many people, you know, 13 apartments, and they have even, those people, they have some visitors.
Okay.
You know, because serious problems, serious problem. I'm really afraid, and hope, I hope, you know, the town members always will be very wise, taking some decisions to think about, you know, the problems of all the businesses in downtown. Because the person who, who's going to live in that apartment and try to park in the, they might come even in front of my place.
Okay.
I won't say anything.
We are well over time.
Yeah, sir, thank, thank you so much for your comments. We, we do appreciate them. I do want to let you know that back then, we didn't have the Larry Lot, and I think you mentioned the library. The library has 27 designated spaces, which they didn't have before. So, and each, each business that comes into town, we are not, you know, we're making decisions along with the chief of police, which thinks it's adequate. And we did have, we did question that, and the chief advised us that he is absolutely fine with 1.5 because he was concerned. But he did speak with, with, I think, the business, and he did speak with the planner of the apartment, of the new, new business. So, all right. Okay, do we have any other public comment? Is there anybody else online? No?
No, but I do want to say that your comments aren't taken lightly. And certainly, I mean, my family's like a big holiday pizza fan, so thank you for what you've contributed to our community. And we spent a lot of time in our last meeting, really going through the parking and really talking through it. So I don't want you to think we're rushing this decision by any means. There was a lot of conversation about this. And I do think it's a town priority to continue to talk about both parking and just downtown ability for patrons to be able to frequent the businesses that are there so that it continues to be a business-friendly downtown. So I just want to make sure that that's stated and understood as part of this conversation.
Okay. Say something quick, too. Yeah, sure. So the beauty is that there's so many cars, we're all trying to figure out where to park in our downtown, right? That's the pro. And the con is, it's kind of hectic, and we're all trying to find a place to park. I, I frequent Holiday often, and I'm grateful that you're there. And I do, I find myself in that same situation, like, where am I going to park? I'll drive around the block six times if I have to. That's okay, because it's worth what I pick up at, at your restaurant. It is notable, though. And I do, I, I think one of my concerns is that designation, right? So for this building and utilization of that lot, that perhaps there's a sign that states that that's where that parking is. This parking is for the residential area that's going to be built and the building that Georgia's, and the reason I say that is so that they know that is where they park, and that there's not loose parking in other areas where people are not associated with these two buildings, and they're not parking in someone else's parking spot that's coming through to go to Holiday or the restaurant or store to pick up what they're seeking. Right? So maybe somebody that's going to live in this beautiful building that's going to be constructed doesn't want to park back there. So they go, I'm not going to park back there, I'm going to park over somewhere else that might take a patron away from another business's parking space. Right? So if it were, had some measure of designation to it, that this is where you park, that might alleviate some of this loose parking in other places in, in a very super congested area in town at certain points of time.
Okay, no, thanks, Kathy. And I think we'll, we can continue that conversation as we talk about the conditions. But at this point, if there's no other public comment, I'm going to close the public comment session. And do I, well, I'd like to close it. Do I hear a motion to close that? Okay, Andrea, you made a motion?
Yes, motion to close.
Do I hear a second?
Second to Kathy.
Okay, I'm going to take a roll call on that, Andrea?
Andrea, yes.
Anne, Buchanan?
Yes.
Kathy Vitroba?
Kathy Vitroba, yes.
Kathy Sylvester?
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
And Emily Gaylord?
Emily Gaylord, yes.
Denise Mason, yes. Okay, so public hearing is closed, and now we will have deliberation. And Kathy, I think all the comments that you just made, I think, are really pertinent to what we'll be doing, proposed conditions. And I don't know if everyone has had a chance to look at the proposed conditions, which Amy went over with Alex and added some. We did discuss some of these on our November 3rd meeting, and also the conversation with the chief to designate that we have 1.5 parking spaces will be designated and assigned for each unit. and clearly identified by signage. So, um, I think that's number five on the proposed conditions.
How do you do the point five? I'm confused by that.
It's one point five parking spaces.
I know. How do you designate the one point five?
I think you just designate all the spaces back there for people in the building.
Okay. So you wouldn't say this, this space is for apartment one. This space is?
No, well, I wouldn't do it by apartment. I would just, I would just, all the spaces back there should be delineated and should be designated for the building.
Gotcha.
And, you know, I mean, I, we don't have that in the conditions, but the more I think about it, uh, you know, I think the, well, I think maybe the signage is there and we did talk about this last time. I think it's really important to put the signage that it's a private lot. And we've got the two designated handicapped ADU spaces. Um, if you wanna go one step further, they can have parking tickets to put in there in the windshield. You know, I don't know whether that's necessary, that may be something that J two K considers afterwards, and if there's an issue, they can do that.
Andrea, is your question more pragmatic? Like, how do you make half a parking spot?
No, I, I mean, I, I, no, um, given that, um, the police chief said that others, um, spaces in town could be used as part of that point five. I mean, so basically, we, we would want the lot to have at least, um, thirteen spaces that, you know, designated, these are private for this apartment building. And then if we're going, uh, point five, so eighteen, make sure there are eighteen spaces.
Uh, or?
There are thirty.
But there are thirty-six.
There are thirty spaces. There are, right. So, right. So as long as there are, are enough, I don't need, and in fact, who knows? Maybe residents will be bus riders and some people have no car. Um, so, as long as there are, um, are enough and the police chief is, is good with it, I'm, I'm fine.
Okay. Anne, do you have a comment?
No, I was just gonna say there, you know, there are more than one point five, um, spots, so.
Right. Well, yeah, I mean, there's thirteen, what, thirteen units and, oh gosh, now I'm trying to remember.
It'd be twenty, maybe, would be one point five.
Right. Okay. All right.
Do we know if this, if, if, uh, this, there's gonna be any, um, low or moderate income housing here or?
There is not planned any.
Not planned.
Yep. Okay. All right. So I, I guess the other questions, I mean, it seems like we've gone over a lot of, of the parking. And I don't know if you have seen any of the proposed conditions yet? Tom? No? Okay. Amy, have you sent that to anyone yet?
No, I sent it to, to you guys.
Okay. All right.
So, I mean, it's basically the standard and then the, the two for the, I think people are familiar with the standard conditions.
Okay.
And it's really just the two that, for the parking.
I'll go over them very briefly. Excuse me?
Could we put it up on the screen, just so we can see it? I mean, it's?
If, if Amy has it. Well, I mean, it was sent to all of us, so we, the planning board should have seen this, but the basics, the standard conditions are to work with the building commissioner. Any kind of change should be required to, shall be, um, reviewed by the board. Um, the applicant is responsible, all permits, approvals, licenses. Uh, you've gotta complete the project in accordance with the approved documents, project plans. That's sort of our standard stuff. And what's added is additional parking for the premises at Two Sugarloaf shall be provided for joint use of parking spaces located on this parcel and the adjacent parcel identified as map one sixty-eight lot twelve, Four Sugarloaf Street. A legally binding parking agreement shall specify that one and one-half parking spaces shall be designated and assigned for each unit and all assigned spaces be clearly identified by signage. Shared parking agreement shall be executed recording at the registry of deeds prior to the issuance of a certificate of occup- occupancy. Um, certificate approval from the building commissioner shall not be applied or issued until the work as approved and the approved plans is completed. So that's really, you know, the gist of it, that's, I mean, aside from just basics, you know, but if you wanna put it up, Amy, that's fine.
Can I just make a suggestion on that, on that last one? Could you just add like, or suitable alternative for that, that recording of the shared parking plan, just because if these end up in common ownership and, you know, they're, you, you can't make an agreement with yourself. Um, so we would just wanna have the flexib-, I mean, we get the intent and purpose, right, and we're not trying to get away from that. It's just as a functional matter of saying like, now do we have to change ownership in order to have this condition satisfied? So, if you just put a comma in there like, or suitable alternative, then at least we'd be able to come in and talk with Alex or building commissioner and say, hey, we get it, but here's what we're gonna propose instead, um, you know, would you be satisfied by it? Instead of trying to workshop it now.
Mm-hmm. I don't know. Comment, Alex, on that?
Yeah, I'm trying to think. I mean, yeah, that would make sense if you guys are comfortable with it. I mean, the the board does generally, as a special permit granting authority, have the ability to, you know, designate generally, Bob just being the building commissioner to, you know, make minor amendments and agreements there, too. Um, that language, Tom, just so you know, is like literally just straight from our bylaw about creating a, a parking agreement. So, that was, you know, kind of where it's, it literally says like, in agreement recorded in the registry of deeds. So, it's, I could see either way. I mean?
Totally. It's just that if, if they were like two separate landowners, I'd probably say zero problem, but because there's like a merger issue, I just don't wanna have like a footfall because of that legal inconsistency.
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay.
But it could be recorded, whatever mechanism we choose.
Yeah, I'd say if it's the same, if it's the same landowner, then it's not gonna have any effect if it's recorded. So that's why I'm saying maybe it ends up being like a restriction or something else that is like self-imposed. But I don't wanna have to like try to workshop that now, and that's why I say like, or suitable alternative to say, you know, and I'd put it together and say, you know, hey, Bob, here's, here's what we can or can't do. Here's what we're proposing instead. It hits exactly what the planning board's looking to do to make sure that these parking spaces, you know, w- will exist as everybody's expecting them to exist designated for who they need to be designated.
Yeah. Yeah, as long as there's some like in perpetuity, I think, right? Like, do you end up selling or, you know, things change? Like, we just wanna protect the residents, I think, is the discussion around it all.
Right.
Totally.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I, I think the thing is, I appreciate everything that everyone has said about parking and about the issues. And I think if we have that it's a private lot, the, the spaces are designated and if you find that it's an issue by giving them park it, parking cards or whatever to put on their windshield, but, um, you know, we don't, we don't want it to be a problem for the town. We don't want it to be a problem for, you know, adjacent businesses. So, if that is going to, by pu- putting that it's a private lot, designating the spaces, if that's going to help solve the issue, but, you know, part of that will be in the conditions, you know, and so if you wanna read that, that's condition five. So, I don't think there's anything else in the conditions that are out of the ordinary.
Maybe, sorry to belabor this, but just one other thing, instead of, I mean, I think it was Andrea's point about how do you designate point five spaces? Um, just as long as the language is such where, you know, in the aggregate, one point five spaces shall be designated, right? So like when you accumulate it, that's fine. And then we can say, oh, you need, you know, thirteen plus another half gets us to eighteen, like that, no problem. But then instead of designating like unit one, gets this one. And this is where it comes down to management, right? So I think as long as in the aggregate, that's what we're designating. I don't see an issue.
Well, and do you think that language is captured by just all assigned spaces shall be cleared by signage? I was thinking that could encapsulate signing the parking lot as just residential.
Yes.
Or it could mean some individual thing. You just need to make up some agreement and we'll work with you on what makes sense.
Yeah, I'm not sure, again, Andrea can speak to this, but I'm not sure whether Andrea mentioned that there's a specific spot for each person. I think the whole parking lot just has to be designated for the residents of the building. Is that, is that correct, Andrea?
That's what I, yes, that's what I was trying to figure out. So if, if it, there are just, here's a lot, it's for a- all the people who live in, uh, at Two Sugarloaf. And one day they, you know, you park one place, one day you park another. As long as there's sufficient parking, that's fine, that's fine by me.
Okay. No, that's good. That's, that's what I thought you meant. And, you know, I mean, people who are visiting, first of all, the units are four, four hundred square feet, the, the studios or whatever you're calling. I don't, you know, there's gonna be one person living there with one car. And if, you know, if people are staying overnight, they can be rec- they could recommend to be in the leary lot because according to some, what, I think what others said at our last meeting, the leary lot is not full overnight. So, you know, it would be recommended that any visitors could park elsewhere. I suppose, but who knows how many visitors people will have. Okay. So do we have other comments?
I, I have one, one question. Um, do, i- is the problem, uh, that people, that patrons of holiday pizza park in that lot? Is that what, what, um, what the owner of holiday pizza is worrying about, that they won't be able to?
It's a pizza.
I don't know. Yeah, sorry, Alex, go ahead.
I suspect because he's worried that they'll park on the street in front of his, and?
So the problem is residents parking in the wrong place, not that patrons won't be able to park where they, where they now park, which would be behind the building.
Right. And I don't think you can park in a leary lot overnight, I thought.
Yeah, so you can actually, it's just not during the winter seasons because of plowing restrictions. And we are, um, actually trying to workshop that. And, um, actually today, this afternoon at like, I think four o'clock, Christopher sent an email, the town administrator sent an email out, um, to some of the businesses that were asking about overnight parking during winter plowing season. And, um, we did actually speak with Matthew Morris, our DPW, and they're gonna actually put some mill filling over the parking lot that the town owns by the railroad and allow some of the residents, um, in the downtown to actually park over there, um, for the winter and overnight. So, we are working on that and we'll have to workshop it more as Elm Street hits and, you know, those sorts of things, so. Not on our, it's not, not on our mind.
Okay. Right. Are there additional questions from the planning board? Anything else?
I have another question. I, I, I think, I, I think part of the draw for these apartments will be a designated parking area, right? Like, that on-street parking is just so ambiguous and a drag and people are like, oh, on-street parking, like, what does that mean? Where am I gonna park? So I think that provides, um, a safe, uh, construct for an individual moving into an apartment, right? Like, we, they have a place to park. It is kind of iffy. Um, will there be lighting? I mean, I don't mean to add to the everything here, but I think if there's lighting and it feels safe, especially when it's dark at four-thirty, right, people are just getting home, um, they'll be more inclined to park in that space and not somewhere else.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I think that, I think, I think we discussed that last time, that there will be adequate lighting. Is that in our?
Okay.
I don't know if we asked that. We can put that as a condition too, by having some lighting in there or, you know, lighting. I don't think there's anybody else, lighting is, especially the lighting that is, um, that goes on and off, which is sort of annoying, especially if you've, you're a resident nearby, but I don't think there are any residential areas. So there could be, we could have a light in the parking lot.
Yeah, I think there's some lighting out there already and it's, I mean, it's one of those things again where I just suggest kind of deferring to the management because they're gonna wanna make sure that the occupants are safe. And if they're not, they're the ones that are gonna be facing the potential liability to make it safer, so.
Yeah. No, that, that makes total sense. I mean, it's nice when you're getting out of, out of your car at night, that there is some kind of lighting. Okay, all right. Okay, um, if there's nothing else, do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
Did we already close the hearing?
I'm sorry, we did close the hearing. Do I? It's Friday.
It's Friday at five forty-five.
Okay.
Uh, a motion to approve the special permit with the attached conditions.
Yes.
I move that.
Second.
Thank you. All right. Okay, I'm gonna take a vote. Roll call, Kathy Sylvester.
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Andrea Leepson.
Andrea Leepson, yes.
Anne Buchanan.
Anne Buchanan, yes.
Kathy Witroba.
Kathy Witroba, yes.
Emily Gaylord.
Emily Gaylord, yes.
And Denise Mason, yes. Pending all the conditions that you saw, and if there are any issues, we will, Alex. Okay.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you and thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, make one more quick comment.
There was a request, if you guys do demo, that you post something. Uh, some residents were, um, asking if they could bring their kids out, you know, to the common to watch the demo.
That's not where I thought that was going, but that's amazing.
And there is, there is a twenty-day period until you can actually start doing anything anyway, so.
Just a thought, not even?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, no, that would be great. Yeah. It would be good to put some of that in Deerfield now because I know people are asking and peo- a number of people are really uninformed just what's going on. So, that would be great. All right. Well, thanks everyone for showing up on a beautiful Friday night.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye, everyone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh wait, we have to.
We have to close the meeting.
Clearly, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Do I hear a motion to?
Adjourn. I move that we adjourn.
I second.
We all second.
Uh, all in favor, Kathy Sylvester?
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Andrea Leepson.
Andrea Leepson, yes.
Anne Buchanan.
Anne Buchanan, yes.
Kathy Witroba.
Kathy Witroba, yes.
Emily Gaylord.
Emily Gaylord, yes.
Denise Mason, yes. So, meeting is closed and thank you so much. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone if you don't see you guys.